Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight, both here in the commission chambers and those watching remotely. We appreciate you being with us and being interested in your county government, or your city-county government. Welcome to our monthly business session of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County. For those of you who would like an agenda that are with us tonight, they're on the table to the right of the doors, and if you're watching remotely, you can get an agenda at athens-clarkcounty.com. If you have an electronic device, I'd ask that you please turn it off or to silence so it won't disturb the meeting. And there'll be four opportunities for citizen input tonight. The first is our consent agenda, which are items one through eight. The second will be old business, which are items nine through fifteen, and then the public hearing on recommendations from the planning department, which are items sixteen and eighteen. There'll be one final opportunity at the end of the meeting. I'll let you know as each of these opportunities are available. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. There's a timing clock on Ms. Sprattlin's desk, and there's also timing lights at the podium there, so please be cognizant of those and get your remarks done before the light turns red so that I won't find it necessary to interrupt you. I also ask you to be considerate of other people, and please refrain from cheering, jeering, or other demonstrations during the meeting. Ms. Sprattlin, would you call the roll for us, please?
Dickerson?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Link?
Here.
Bright?
Here.
Bailey?
Present.
Neesmith?
Present.
Vale?
Here.
Herrod?
Present.
Gertz?
Here.
Hampton?
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of July 5th and July 19th?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any written communications, Ms. Sprattlin?
No.
We will now go to our citizen comment on the consent agenda, which again are items one through eight. So anyone that would like to speak to one of those items, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and let us know which item you're speaking to. Anyone wish to speak? Are you coming? I keep thinking somebody looks like they're coming up. Okay, if no one's interested in speaking to these items, we'll come behind the rail. And Mr. Brown, would you read the ordinances, I think it's one, two, three, and four?
Yes, I will. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to alcoholic beverages, classic center special events, and for other purposes. The second is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to parking restrictions on Henderson Extension and for other purposes. The third, an ordinance to amend the FY 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding, if awarded, from the Federal Justice Assistance Grant Program for Automated License Plate Recognition System and for other purposes. And the fourth is an ordinance to amend the FY 2017 annual operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for operating expenses related to Superior Court and for other purposes.
Thank you. Would any commissioner like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove items three and eight, please.
Okay. And we will put those at the beginning of our hold items.
May I like to move for the adoption of the consent agenda items one, two, four, five, six, and seven?
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
I'd like to second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now go to our old business, and anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us about one of the items under that category, those are items nine through fifteen, this would be the time to come to the podium and let us hear from you.
Tyler Dewey, 1075 West Broad Street. We'll just speak quickly to item number 11. Bike Athens has long has its sort of motto and mission as support transportation choices, and we certainly support the youth ridership program, which will make it easier for kids, especially kids without cars that are easy access to a private automobile, the ability to get some mobility, and greater access to all the great programs in Athens-Clark County. So again, Bike Athens, we just support the Athens Transit Youth Ridership Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Kaia Pollak, and I live on 275 Getwood Circle, and I would like to talk about Article 15, or sorry, number 15 on the agenda. It's about moving the Cooperative Extension Building to off of Cleveland Road, and I would like to go against that because if it moves, I think it will be the end of 4H. If we move, the people from the east side will have a very hard time getting there. Traffic is already hard enough once school ends, and for our agents, Ms. Felton and Ms. Conway, when they go to the different schools to pick them up, if we are transferred to the new location, we will not have any time for meetings. And also, it'll just be hard for everyone to get to, no matter if they're from the west side or the east side, because Cleveland Road is next to the mall on the very western side of the county, and 4H has just done so much for all of the students and young adults here, so I would like to either keep it in its place or look at another location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak. Anyone else wish to speak to us?
My name is David Finkel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of y'all tonight. Hadn't planned on coming until I read an article in the Athens Online today, but I would like to talk about the airport building. And in summary, I don't think it's the right project at this time, particularly when we are going to have to take money from other projects that probably have, in my opinion, a higher priority. I'm also in the planning commission here, and we are taking some moderate steps to improve the business climate on Atlanta Highway and Lexington Highway, and I, again, this is just an opinion, we don't know if there's ever going to be an airline coming to Athens, a major airline. They've only had seven riders on the whole thing. I am absolutely for building a terminal, but only if it's supported by documented demand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Finkel. Anyone else? If y'all would please, if you want to speak, sort of move to the center so we can not take up so much time. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Apperson. I live at 835 Hill Street, Apartment B, and I'm addressing item number 15 as well. It's my opinion that this is a bad choice to move it out to Cleveland Road. There's a few different reasons for that. But first, I wanted to start with just the enormous value that cooperative extension offers. A lot has been said already about 4H, about the great things that it does, but from my perspective, it does a lot for local businesses as well. Working at the Daily Groceries Co-op, they have partnered with us, offering many classes to our patrons and our customers. They do great things also with the local cleaning co-op that I work for, Peachy Green, and the green cleaning brochures that they provide have been enormously helpful to our business to get started, so just to make a quick comment about how enormously valuable they are, and to then say that basically, as well as they serve us, we need to serve them. And I believe that the locations that have been proposed as alternatives to Cleveland Road, those of Gaines School and Lexington Road, are closer and easier for those who most need it, and it'd be a better choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Apperson.
Hi, my name is Chris Dowd. I live at 245 North Harris Street. I'm speaking to item number 11, the Athens Transit Youth Ridership Program. Since youth ridership increased 600% due to this program, it seems there would be clear benefits to extending it year-round, and I don't see why it should have to go up for renewal, seeing as we have already carried out the pilot program, which was a big success. And changing the language to "all fees waived" from "free of charge" also seems unnecessary. I'm not sure why that's being done. Maybe some want to remind these kids that maybe they owe the city for this, or maybe not to expect such generosity in the future? I'm not sure. But, you know, we all rely on important government services, such as school buses, smooth and safe roads for our cars, education, firefighters, and let's not single anyone out, please support Commissioner Gertz's CDO on item number 11. And about item 15, the Cooperative Extension Office, it would be a shame to let this resource go underutilized due to an inaccessible location. It seems that an east-side location would be more fitting because most of the farms in the county are located there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Tim Denson, 290 Midway Road. I would first just like to speak briefly on item 15 and the Cooperative Extension Office move. I know that there was public comment taken, and there wasn't a lot of people coming into that, and I understand that's probably really frustrating when that happens, and we've seen this happen before, but from what's coming forward now, it sounds like the best move might be to do what was done with the food trucks, put this off, have another round of public comments, and so much is coming out here. And, yeah, I was surprised to learn that most master gardeners lived on the east side, and I live on the east side, and where this location may move to is definitely difficult to get to for traffic reasons. Also want to speak to number 11. I urge the commission to support Commissioner Gertz's CDO. And this might sound like small little things with the semantics, because I saw that Commissioner Sims also put forward a CDO that was changed from the original proposal. And, like I said, it might sound like small things, but there was a reason that that change was put in place, and the reasons, I am opposed to those reasons, and I think that Commissioner Gertz goes in the right direction. Two weeks ago, Commissioner Dickerson said, "It's not about the money, it's about the principle of it," by charging or not calling it free. And I agree, it is about the principle of it. Five-to-17-year-old children are not stupid. They're very appreciative, they're very thankful, sometimes more so than adults, honestly. But they haven't necessarily been conditioned to appreciate or value things in a monetary way. That is completely true. And, you know, maybe that's a good thing. Maybe that's something that we could start be doing here from the county level more often, too. They do value the service it provides them, and they measure it by how it helps them in their life. I rode the bus, I ride it every single week, I rode it next to a lot of these K-12 students. They were very nice, they were appreciative, they were definitely a lot more of them, which was fantastic to see, always respectful. And if any of y'all don't ride the bus often, it's really pretty fantastic. When you get off the bus, often, I'd say at least half the riders, they always yell back to the rider, "Driver, thank you." It's this very appreciative, it's a very nice culture, it's a very equitable, very equal way to get around the city. And I think, you know, that changing the wording so that we can't call it "free" and say "fee wages," it is, Chris, probably a good point, like, why are we doing that? Is it because we don't, you know, think they're thankful? They are thankful, they're very thankful, they understand what they're getting out of this. Do we want them to understand, like, you know, then the value of it, the money? If that's so, then why aren't we doing this to the tennis courts? Why aren't we doing this to the baseball fields, other places? Do we feel like the people that ride the bus have a lower understanding, or have some other kind of need that needs to be told to them? Is it that they all understand the value of a dollar? Because that is just wrong. Thirty-eight percent of them definitely understand the value of a dollar, not because of how many their family has, but because of how many their family needs. We can choose to create policy built on a foundation of cooperation, trust, understanding, compassion, or we can create policy built upon skepticism, classism, and competitiveness. The children in this community do need to have a lesson, talk to them, and that lesson is that this community is behind them, and we care about them.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Fyoc, and I'm from Colbert, Georgia, but I come to Athens every day.
Richard, would you give us your name, because I didn't catch it?
Richard Fyoc.
Would you spell it for us?
F-Y-O-C-K.
Thank you.
It's number 11. Please allow K-12 students to ride the bus for free. We live in a high-poverty city, and it is a privilege to have a parent or other guardian free from work or rest with enough money to own, maintain, insure, and fuel a car. Few privileged children will be riding the bus, as it is always much easier in Athens to take your own car. When your life review happens after this life, will you see you voted for and found a way to fund impoverished youth to ride the bus so that they could live a happier life? And that is your choice today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fyoc.
My name is Leslie Johnson. I'm at 4214 Old Lexington Road. I wanted to speak about item number 15, and this is actually the first time I've come to a commission meeting, and I wanted to come out because when I heard about this, I really wanted to make my voice heard. I am the president of a group in Athens called the Ladies Homestead Gathering of Athens-Clark County, and we use the Extension Office once a month for our monthly meetings. And I've known for a while that the Extension Office was going to be relocated, and when I heard of the plans of where it's to be relocated, it just didn't make any sense to me. And I understand that a lot of people in this room might not use the Extension Office, and if you don't use it, it doesn't seem very relevant. You might think, "Well, it's just someplace that if you got to go to the Extension Office, you're going to drive out there." But it's a service that our community provides, and as a woman who is involved in trying to get other women who are interested in self-sufficiency, and interested in being able to have locally grown food and provide things for our families, people want healthy food for their families. We want people in our community to learn about that, and there are some people who don't have transportation. If we want the Extension Office to be able to do outreach into our community and help people learn about budgeting and preserving food and different things that they can do with the food, then it needs to be located someplace where it's accessible, and it should be something that is visible and something we're proud of, not something to tuck back in a spot where people can't find it. So I hope that you consider the needs of the people who actually use the Extension Office when you think about where you want to locate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm Casey Moll from 301 South Church Street, and I stand here tonight as a product of cooperative extension in Athens-Clark County. I spent many nights and weekends in that little house on Broad Street. While I was in 4H, and even today, I often share of a story that's attributed to Keith Hurd, also an Athens-Clark County 4H'er. He shared that when he was in the Georgia General Assembly and in his insurance business, he didn't have to regularly use the qualities that he learned in the 4H poultry judging process to rate and evaluate a class of white-legged production hens, but he used other skills he learned every day, skills such as self-confidence, how to give reasons for a decision, and how to evaluate situations. Our 4H judging teams continue to do these same things today. The consumer judging team in Clark County would rank the proposed decision to place the Cooperative Extension Office on Cleveland Road last in the class. The proposed location is not 4H blue-ribbon quality. Cooperative extension must remain accessible, affordable, and visible to all of Athens-Clark County citizens. Visibility is going to be more important in any new location. It's hard to identify a more traveled road than Broad Street, where that little house is ably served for over 45 years. Affordability and accessibility are within your control. Later tonight, you may have the opportunity to make extension services more affordable to the youth who need extension most, those without reliable private transportation. But the flaw in this justification is the accessibility argument. An extension office off Cleveland Road will not be accessible to the individuals dropping off 4H camp payments over their lunch break, to working families leaving work during rush hour to pick up their kids, or the nursery owner dropping off soil samples. But perhaps most hurtful inaccessibility is what the proposed location will do to FNEP and SNAP Ed. The Expanded Food Nutrition Education Program is proof positive to improve the health and well-being of low-income families. The program teaches participants how to improve their diet, be more physically active, stretch their food dollars, and increase their knowledge in food safety. Georgia has one of the most cost-effective programs in terms of health benefits and future savings in FNEP and SNAP Ed. But I asked you, will this office be accessible to those who need it most, when it's accessible via walking distance from only one bus route in Athens-Clark County? Many have stated it'll be a short drive, and you can just get on the loop to get there. But the flaw in this logic is whether it's accessible to all of our county citizens, regardless of their method of transportation. I encourage you to earn the blue ribbon, and like the site selection committee, place the Cleveland Road location last in class. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moll.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. My name is Michael Smith. I live at 147 First Street. We have a building on 147 Bryan Street. This is concerning the youth fair program. Commissioner Sims is leading a youth empowerment committee to combat anti-gang activity. I'm very appreciative of that committee kickstarting something that we've all supported over the years and just now are being able to take advantage of. I'd like also to point out that I think the two important public policy discussions here tonight with the ordinances, whether the funding is permanent or not. I support permanent funding. This is a great program, as is the Sunday Bus Fair program, or the Sunday Bus Program. These are both programs that we could present for federal aid for maybe, including in future years, other classes of people like seniors and disabled. The Department of Transportation has made clear that in small-market programs, especially university programs, that innovation is the key to getting ridership. We still have a fair system. We all want a fair, fair-free system over years. This essentially is a fair-free system for our youth. I think more of it is an opportunity pass, as other than a free pass, but also appreciate all the commissioners' remarks at the prior meeting, Ms. Dickerson, Mr. Gertz, everybody that had something to say about it, very well appreciative of that. And then the second thing is, is I support the move to include the language to say seventeen and under are any youth in a secondary school, I don't know the exact language, in a high school or junior high with a current ID. I think this will give hundreds of students that make them eligible to ride the bus free to take advantage of this opportunity that we're all creating here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I'm Russell Edwards, 400 Duncan Springs Road. I, as well as, I'm very much in favor of the youth ridership program. I went to the West Broad Farmers Market Back-to-School Program on Saturday and spoke to some folks there who, there was a woman there that had five kids in Clark County Public Schools, and she didn't know about the program. So I still think there's people in the community that will learn about this program and take advantage of it, and gain appreciation of what this commission can do to really help impoverished people in this community. This lady had, like I said, five kids in Clark County Schools, so you multiply five times $1.50 one way, that can be a real expense for a family to get to a place like the library or the Botanical Gardens, or the George Museum of Art, or some of the great free programming that our community already provides. I think Mr. Sims' task force has found that transportation has really been a barrier for folks to take advantage of those programs, and I'm really proud of the commission putting in place this program over the summer. I think it's, poverty is extremely difficult problem to attack, but this program does it very effectively, and provides a real way for impoverished people to live a better life in our community. So I'm proud to be an Athenian, I'm proud to be represented by this commission that puts in place a program like this that really does provide help for families in need, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Broderick Flanagan, 1645 East Broad Street. I just want to voice my support for the youth ridership year-round. I believe that type of program would allow chess and community to expand its services to students who may not have transportation to get home. We offer a program at the library every Monday from 4:00 to 5:30, and I believe giving some students the free ridership year-round would allow them to take advantage of such services, and allow us to kind of reach a broader demographic here in Athens. Also, I want to speak to and support of the Extension Office staying in town or even relocating somewhere on the east side of Athens. I recently just learned where the office was because I now sit on the board of the Athens Farmers Market, and we're working on a partnership to bring a healthy food initiative to lower-income and poor communities. I firmly believe that a lot of the chronic illnesses that happen in poor communities can be prevented through proper diet, and with these type of programs being in-town and accessible to people, I think that that will greatly benefit this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and we will start with item number 11.
Number three.
Excuse me, number three. Which, Ms. Link asked us to take on.
Yeah, I have a few concerns about this grant. From what I understand, this is a grant request for funds that would pay for the technology for license plate scanning. And I understand we already have this technology, and would this be replacing used equipment so it's not expanding the program at all?
That's correct. This is just replacing our existing four systems.
Okay. I mean, my concerns have to do with the idea that this is for vehicles identified for enforcement actions, including Amber Alerts, stolen vehicles, expanded registration, expired insurance, and wanted persons. I have a real issue with the idea that this could be used to target, you know, and, you know, we see this cycle of fines and fees and incarceration, and I just don't want to see our community be engaging in those practices. And I look forward to the Police Department's Strategic Planning Committee, which will use citizens, so I hope that, you know, as we use this equipment, that, you know, our officers are extremely sensitive to its appropriate use. And with that said, I'm happy to put it back on consent.
Well, we've already voted on consent, so we'll have to vote. Would you like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we vote on it.
Make a motion to approve?
Oh, do you want, Jerry?
May I offer something?
Yes, please. I'm trying to figure out what he's pointing at.
I do want to dispel any idea that this is somehow targeting folks. It is a method of identifying folks who have broken the law, and it's much more effective than just, you know, it's proven very effective at finding those violators, and so, you know, particularly when we're dealing with wanted persons and Amber Alerts, it's been a very effective tool.
Yeah, I mean, my concerns have more to do with things like expired registration and insurance, you know, where we might just be scanning every license plate that goes by, just tagging those kind of folks. I have really mixed feelings about this. I think...
Mr. Smith.
If their insurance is expired, I don't want them in front of me, or behind me, or around me, anywhere. So I'd like a motion to approve this agenda item.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think you already read the ordinances. Yeah, he read the ordinances before we did the, when we were working on consent agenda change. Okay, and Ms. Link, you also asked for item number eight, which is the uncommon, related to the uncommon.
Yeah, I'd like the manager to explain exactly what the situation is here. We have a brand-new building that's encroaching on the right-of-way, and we're kind of retroactively giving them approval to do that. Is that correct?
So, this is the new development, the Uncommuns, and there was a fairly sizable piece of right-of-way that was created back in the 70s with the realignment of the street, and apparently, they drifted with their wall about a foot over onto the right-of-way. The final as-built survey showed that. Doing so, we can't give them a final certificate of occupancy until that's rectified or you approve this permanent easement encroachment. It does not materially affect the space. It doesn't cause any concern for future use of the space, and so, in trying, you know, a mistake was made, and it doesn't produce any real barriers for us, so staff is recommending to go ahead and approve the encroachment.
Do you have any idea how high that wall is that they built?
Now, going on just walking by it, I believe it's about five to six feet high.
Okay. I just want to point out that this is another instance where, you know, we're seeing serious flaws in our code, particularly downtown. We're becoming a community of retaining walls in our face right and left, and I know that other communities have guidelines for those, where you don't have these tall retaining walls that are highly visible, you know? Often, they're required to build the buildings in front of them or stagger them so you have more terrorist effects, and I've been talking about this for a really long time, and I hope that we can get to our codes before we become a walled city. I just want to take the opportunity to say that once again.
Would anybody like to make a motion or discuss? Would anybody like to make a motion or discuss this further?
Motion for approval, Madam Mayor.
A and B.
Who did the second? Mr. Smith. Okay, have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now move to item number nine, which is the Briar Cliff Road Parking Restrictions. Will you read the ordinance, Mr. Bearman?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to parking restrictions on Briar Cliff Road and for other purposes.
Any discussion or motion? Mr. Handy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this, this is in my district. Now, it was on consent, and I appreciate y'all letting me take it off. The, and I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve, but I would like to make some clarification with staff. I'm looking at the, the picture here, and I just want to make sure that when they go out to do the yellow curbing, that they also look at the right side of the picture as you're going toward Broad Street. Just, I know there's some, some, some gaps in the yellow curbing along there, so I'm hoping they'll take a look at re-yellow curbing that part as well. That's, I think that's already, that's already approved for yellow curbing, if I'm not mistaken.
You're saying the existing yellow curbing may be fading?
Exactly.
Yes, we'll renew that as part of this.
Okay, good, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we, that takes us to item number 10, which is the replacement of pay-and-display parking meters with single-place, single-space parking meters on East Clayton Street. Mr. Handy?
Thank you, and this was another item that was on the consent agenda, and I hope I'm not wasting y'all's time, but I thought it's important to, to make note of the fact that we are taking away the pay-and-display meters and putting up single-space meters to make it more convenient for shoppers and users of downtown. So I know the mayor's been after this for quite a some time now.
That's something I certainly hope would happen in my term.
So we will, go ahead and make a motion to approve this agenda item.
Second.
Have a motion, second. You wanted to speak to this, Mr. Bearman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to point out, we probably do need to change those meters, but in 2009, the ADDA spent $2,210,000 on the meters that are there now, and we were told that they were basically going to be better than sliced bread. People didn't like them. They didn't get used, people complained, and, and, you know, maybe we do need to change them, but now we're going to spend another $151,000 to change them out, if I'm, if I'm reading our report right. So that's $361,000 in the course of seven years to change out meters. Just like the caution that, that we do our research better and not spend money on a product that people aren't going to use and not like, then have to go and replace them again. I'm sure that the ADDA has thought of that, but I just wanted to say a word of caution for future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Anyone else, before I go back to Mr. Handy? Mr. Handy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd, I'd just like to point out that, that you're right. We made a mistake, and this is going to help us fix it. We did get some longevity use out of, out of the pay-and-display meters, but realized that that wasn't the right direction. So, so I would hope that, that, that we're not going to do it again, but a mistake was made, and we're, you know, we're fixing the problem. And, and I think the users of downtown will appreciate this. So, thank you.
And, and actually, I think they were probably state-of-the-art when we bought them.
They were.
And, and I think there's a lot of value in having a uniform system downtown, but also believe that, that our data has shown us that we're going to get more parking revenue, and they're going to pay for themselves, too. So, so it was a mistake, but hopefully.
And actually, at the time, there wasn't a, a machine that was, enabled you to take credit cards like there is now with the single space, so that was another factor that played into it.
And, and I also.
I'm not trying to make excuses, it was a mistake, but.
I also believe ADDA has found a buyer for those meters, too, that's going to buy them, they're not going to just be junked. Mr. Bearman, you give us an ordinance, please.
Yes. An ordinance to amend the FYI 2017 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, in order to provide funding for installation of replacement parking meters and revise estimated revenues from parking fees and for other purposes.
I think we had a motion, do we have a second? Have a second? Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we'll go to item number 11, and we have two CDOs, Mr. Sims and Mr. Gertz, which, which one of y'all would like to go first?
Let me just quickly address the villain, which is, in mine, is more villainous, I guess. Again, the reason that it was stated the way it was, if it, oh, here it comes. Basically, you know, like I said, Ms. Dickerson and I talked about it, and in life, you know, young people need to understand, and I am all for this, and I'm definitely going to support it, but, you know, in life, nothing is free. And that's why we're talking about, we are wavering fees, which, and that's what we're doing. We're not saying this is, so, it's still got to be paid for. Whenever a child gets on that bus, it's, that's a head count, and it's going to be, it's going to be calculated, and going to be computed, and it's going to be paid for. Now, those young people that are riding the bus, and we want them to ride the bus, we encourage them to ride the bus, and we want them to get to where they need to be. But we also want the young people and, and everyone else to understand, in life, ain't nothing free. There's going to be a cost to somebody. You know, you can, it's just like the Framorter commercial says, you can pay me now, you can pay me later, but you're going to pay. And, and we're hoping that for this, this is going to pay dividends for our young people because they're going to become riders of the bus and be, become more utilitarian of the bus, and at some point in time, after they get past that seventeen-year age, they'll still be wanting to use the bus, and they'll have to pay for it. But right now, we want them to say, this is, you know, sometimes we, we make people think that they're entitled to things. This is not, you know, it's not an entitlement, it's the fact that we are giving them an opportunity to be future citizens and see the goodwill that we all want to have for this community. This community, again, like I said, we talk about impoverished. I, I know about impoverished, I lived in impoverishment, and, but that didn't make me decide that I'm going to continue to let that linger with me. You have to do some things on your own, and the sooner we understand that the free ride is over, then we'll do the things that are, are proper. And these young people, we want them to be trained and understand that this is not free. This is, we're wavering this, they are having the opportunity to use a system that does have a cost to it. And now, Mr. Gertz is going to take over, and we're going to use his.
Mr. Gertz?
I'll, I'll continue. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Sims. I guess I just want to begin by talking a little bit, maybe sociologically, about why this makes sense. And, and some of that kind of stems from my experience, a lot of folks know that for about the last twenty years, this is the group of people in town who I've been working with, and they mean a lot to me in their lives, and their families' lives, and their experiences mean a lot to me. And researchers who talk about youth development generally, and the possibility of negative activity in youth, talk about risk factors, and they also talk about protective factors. Risk factors are those things, obviously, that are going to send young people down a bad road, those things that are going to encourage them to commit crimes, or belong to gangs, and protective factors are those things that are going to prevent those activities from going on. And I firmly believe this is a protective factor. I, I wouldn't claim before any of you that, you know, a bus pass is going to be the be-all, end-all, but I, I think when you couple this with the positive relationship that Chief Freeman and our police department generally are promoting between the city and our youth, and when you think about the government's promotion of the Great Promises Partnership, and its ability to tie youth into this major institution, this is another opportunity for us to say, you know, young people of Athens, we are on your side, we are with you, we're promoting good things in your life, we're promoting the ability for you to go out and go to a job interview, to go to the library, to run to the store and pick up a bed sheet for grandma, to do all those kinds of things that are going to logistically mean good things. In my commission to find option, I've expanded the range of applicable youth, not only from those five to seventeen, but to include those K to twelve students as well. The reality is, there are a lot of eleventh to twelfth graders who are older than seventeen, and nationally speaking, under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, students who are in special education category can be up to age twenty-two and, and still be in high school. And so I want to make sure that we're inclusive of all those folks. Again, I, I see this and have experience with this being a, a group of people who we want to ensure that we can reduce risk for and provide opportunity for. And, and certainly, it's true that that opportunity, I think, will pay dividends, but it does come at a greater public cost. I think it's a cost that's worth it, and I think it's a cost that I, I will, you know, as we go through future budget cycles, want to see renewed, year in, year out. But given that this is a new program, I'm, I'm certainly happy to incorporate the component of Commissioner Sims' option into mine, that would indicate that extension of this waiver into future budget years will be determined by the mayor and commission during the annual budget process. In reality, that's true of anything that we do. Anything that we do, we decide every springtime whether we're going to continue to do that, whether we're going to expand it, or whether we're going to do it differently. So that, that language, while it's here, and really is standard operating procedure for local governments. I guess I want to talk a little bit about logistics. There had been some discussion amongst commissioners who I spoke with about who this would be extended to. The Clark County School District has a mechanism for, for making IDs, so that's something that they can do and that they have done for groups of students in the past. So we know that they're covered, that there, of course, somewhere around twelve percent of our kids in the county who are either homeschooled or at private institutions, and I talked some with Assistant Manager Hiss about the prospect of just having an administrative process wherein those students who are either homeschooled or who are at private institutions can go to transit, be it at the multimodal center or at the Pound Street address, and, and basically get an annual voucher that will cover them. The, the thing, practically speaking, we don't want to do is put our bus drivers in the position of being like a bouncer at a bar, where they're having to rifle through eighty different prospective ID types and figure out, like, oh, is this Alaska ID real or not? And, and so we don't want to do that, and, and I'm confident in the ability of, of the manager's office and folks in transit to create that format. So I, I think that covers everything, so I'm going to make a motion that the mayor commission approve a youth ridership program that allows all Athens-Clark County resident youth ages five to seventeen, or youth who are K to twelve students residing in Athens-Clark County with a current valid school ID, to ride Athens Transit's fixed route service of the bus free of charge year-round, and that extension of this waiver into future budget years will be determined by the mayor and commission during the annual budget process.
I'll second. Have a motion in a second? You want to speak to this?
No.
Okay.
I wanted to give it a strong second.
Ms. Wright. Ms. Link, I'm sorry.
I want to thank Commissioner Gertz for, for tweaking this a bit, and I also want to address the idea of entitlement. Youth in this community see UGA students get on our Athens-Clark County bus every single day, and, and staff, for free. So if there's any entitlement going around here, it's not on the struggling youth in our community who need to rely on this service. Yeah, granted, those UGA students pay through their fees, but the image out there that's projected to the rest of the community is very, very different. I am extremely excited about this program. You know, I was at the initial Transit Stakeholders Meeting probably over a year ago, and, you know, this got brought up, and I'm glad to see that it's been followed through with. I'm a regular bus rider, and I'm, I'm happy to see those kids on the bus regularly, and happy to see those parents getting them out of the house and enjoying the community. Not only does this relieve that parental burden, that taxi mom, and, you know, this is something that's not about lower-income folks who have limited access to transportation, but it's middle-class folks who are sick and tired of carting their kids all over town to soccer practice or to visit their friends or whatever. They can let them take some responsibility, and, and it takes a little brain work to figure out how to use the system, and that's good, that's, that's really good. It encourages these new experiences in kids, and it encourages them to get jobs. I know some kids who are using that bus to get to jobs. And it does create lifetime riders, and those riders will pay fares down the line. So it, in essence, ensures the long-term viability of our transit system and puts fewer cars on the road, which means fewer fumes, which means healthier air and less impact on global climate change. So this is a win-win-win-win situation, and I'm extremely excited that we're moving forward with it.
Ms. Wright, then I'll get back to you. Ms. Wright?
Yeah, I, I want to applaud us moving forward with this as well, and look forward to voting for it, and I also hope that when we reassess it, we can get some numbers from the school district and all the after-school programs that we have. I think we're going to see an increase in participation in those, or consistent participation in them. All of our school campuses, especially the middle and high school level, are very busy after school, and this is going to allow some more time at those good events that we have on campus, and them getting home.
Ms. Smith?
There's another element of our population that we haven't spoken about that will greatly benefit from that, and those that are being served as developmentally disabled, whether it's physical or mental or emotional, they, they have access to lots of places for treatment, such as through some of the Advantage Behavioral locations. And in a recent meeting with Advantage, I mentioned this, and there was a palpable excitement that this could happen, because some of their, some of their students are twenty-two years old, so they're still considered in secondary education, high school, but they need rights to, to work and, and job, work and, and treatment and so forth. So this is going to help a lot of people.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say that I further applaud Commissioner Gertz and Commissioner Sims on combining these CDOs. I think what's important is that by waiving the fees, we're essentially teaching financial literacy, which is a cornerstone of a lot of the programs, the Young Urban Farmers, the 4-H, we just heard about, I mean, that the kids have to learn at some point, it does cost money to live, and so I think it's important, and it is, it should be considered a gift from this community. It's no, I, I've had citizens reach out to me, and they said, you know, we think it's a great program, but we want the kids to understand this is something the community's generously done, you know, providing for them, and they want them to use it. So, so I just wanted to say I appreciate the combined effort, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Anybody else? Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't, I'll be brief, because a lot of people have spoken, but Kelly and I had a long conversation last week about some of the specific logistics on this, so I'm glad that some of my comments were taken into account on this. And I think it's also very important that this is something that is yet another benefit of living in Athens-Clark County, as opposed to living in some of the other surrounding communities. And so I think it's very important that, that we do this also for that reason. It's showing the people that have made a decision to live in Athens-Clark County that they get something for their money. So, and with that, I will call the question.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are now moving on to item number 12, which is the Wittenville Station subdivision, and I believe that's in Commissioner Dickerson's district. Do you like to?
Yeah, I don't thi, unless there's some questions about it, I guess I'd like to make a motion that we approve item, option 1A and B.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Harrod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a question about this at the agenda study meeting, and I did speak with Manager Williams this afternoon, and he addressed the issue that I had, and so I'm happy that that has been addressed. And I don't know if you want to talk about this, or just, we can just vote on it?
It's up to you.
I, I don't need to talk about it, but.
Okay. I will call the question then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We're now to item number 13, which, we have a, a collaborative CDO from Ambie Dickerson and Gertz. Which one of y'all would like to open this conversation?
I'm, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Dickerson, the airport commissioner over there.
Well, and, and just to make it clear, everybody thinks this is in my, it's actually in Harry's district, but my predecessor was in his district at one point, he served or attended the meeting, so I've just continued doing it, so for that, just so everybody knows historically, it's actually, but, but I go to the meeting, so I'll talk a little bit about it. So, as everybody knows, the Spilas, or Sploes Project was approved eleven years ago, and as a result of it being now eleven years later, our costs have gone up. So what we're asking today in the CDO is that we award the construction service contract for 4.4 million and some change to the lowest, most responsive bidder, Kevin Price, General Contractors, and that we adopt some budget amendments that will provide for that, that deficit between what we have available and what we need. And so basically, if you look at item 1B, we've got about 995,000 from the unallocated earned interest, which typically is given to the projects at the end, which, this is one of the last projects of 2005, and that's typically what that money is used for, and an additional 425,000 from the corridor infrastructure project, with the understanding that the manager will identify two, or create two sub-projects in Spilas 2011 to, to shift manager will identify or create two subprojects in Speedloss 2011 to shift the money to. And in the future, that money will be used to... The money from Speedloss 2011 will go to support that project. Did I say that right? It's kind of confusing. I'm sorry. I'm trying to make it... There's a lot of moving around money, but basically, there's money that we don't need right now in that infrastructure project that we're going to set aside for this project. And when we get to that, those projects, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have some contingency left, and if not, we'll move the remaining monies around to make sure that those projects are supported. Did I make that clear?
Clear, clear.
Sorry. I know, it's kind of... It's a lot of...
Actually, if you read through it a couple of times, it makes sense.
Right.
And I will just add something quick about the business corridor. A lot of that specific money was directed towards some stormwater and sidewalk improvements. So what this does, you know, certainly 2011 Sploß has some categories associated with stormwater and sidewalks, so this allows us to meet that obligation.
Bill, we have an ordinance. Would you make sure we...
The first is an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax 2005 program budget so as to provide additional funding for the special purpose local option sales tax 2005 project number three, airport commercial terminal facility, and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax 2011 program budget so as to provide additional funding for the special purpose local option sales tax 2011 projects 12, pedestrian safety and safe routes to schools, and 27, area-wide stormwater improvements program, and for other purposes.
Do we need... The motion.
Thank you. Do we need two votes on this, or can we do it with one vote?
We can do it with one.
Okay. So is that what your motion intended?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You want to say something, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Bailey.
I just, I have some concerns about us reallocating the monies this way. The mayor and commission have the right to do this, but we are basically moving around money that the citizens voted on, specific referendums, and there's just an awful lot of it in this particular project. So I just want to state that I have some concerns about that. Thank you.
Mr. Neesmith.
Well, we need sidewalks, and we need stormwater items, but I am not convinced we need a terminal. I think the management of the airport and the board have had ample opportunity to do an inside sales job with us, to convince us that what they're doing is going to result in something that uses this terminal. They have utterly failed in convincing me that their efforts are productive or even what they are. Yeah, we got a memo that said that there have been four reports given to the government. I've seen one. So I'm going to move to deny this.
We have a motion on the floor for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second.
This is a substitute.
Any further discussion before we vote?
Madam Mayor.
Sir?
It would be a substitute motion. Just to be clear, I'm making a substitute motion to deny. There was a motion on the floor.
Oh, was there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't...
I didn't realize there was a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
So this is a substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion and substitute. Any further...
I just have a question. I mean, we are under a legal obligation to build this, and so if the substitute motion passes, I'm wondering where that leaves us legally, Mr. Attorney.
I don't think it would remove the legal obligation. It's just saying that this particular allocation of money would not pass. Ultimately, if you decide finally not to build this terminal, I think you would have to make a finding that the project is no longer feasible. That's the standard that the Georgia Supreme Court has established for not spending money on projects that don't make any sense ultimately. But that's not, as I understand it, the gist of this motion, this motion is just to deny this particular proposal, and it's not the ultimate determination of the commercial, I mean, yeah, the commercial terminal.
But is it not the case that this is being done this way because there isn't sufficient money in the budget at present to build the terminal as required by the referendum?
Just this version of the terminal. I mean, certainly, you could reprogram it, you could reduce it in scope, but based on the programmatic requirements for what, you know, the airport is saying it needs, if you were to cut the scope, it would change it appreciably.
Ms. Bell.
I served on the committee several years ago in the process of selecting the Sploß projects, and at that time, there was a major discussion, and I can't remember how many were on the actual committee, but there was some discussion of whether they really wanted to do or not to do it. But it really warned me out with something that I felt like a town the size of Athens representing Athens-Clark County, but also representing our University of Georgia, and the traffic that we have, even though we don't have an actual service. And I was so provoked with so much of the discussion, I finally said, maybe we should just get rid of that old building and let's put a double white out there. Well, that's kind of my feelings about this right now. We've been talking about this. We've been wanting to work on this, and I'm sorry that the money's not there with the cost of building and construction right now. But when I think of what draws into Athens, and I remember last year when we played the University of Alabama, we had had a big rain, and our fields were flooded, and we had to send airplanes to Washington. We had to send airplanes other places because we had too much mud around that terminal. But that's another example of how much that place is used and how many people come into that location for the events, and not just sports, but there are other things that happen that call them to Athens-Clark County. So I'm sorry that we have to shift the monies a little here or a little bit there, but we'll find a way to make the others work, but I think it's time for us to move on and have a terminal that Athens can be proud of.
Thank you. And Ms. Dickerson, and then Ms. Link.
Yeah, I just wanted to point a couple of things out. Irrespective of whether or not we get scheduled air service, the North Terminal is going to be used for a variety of purposes, so I just want to point that out, and it's going to generate money from day one. We have a growing charter service out there that basically is basically 12 months a year now, where it used to only be, you know, six to seven months a year. We are looking for scheduled air service. We've been told, if you guys read the article and got the report from the mayor's office, we've been told that that is a huge indicator to the private sector that's looking to provide scheduled air service, that that's a huge indicator of the community's interest in having scheduled air service in the area. We know that we have demand for it. The facility, the North Terminal, will also be used for car rental companies. We're looking at adding another one right now, and also for the flight school. That originally had been a separate building, and now that's going to be part of the North Terminal. But I think it's important that should... The terminal's going to be built because it's needed now. There's going to be room for scheduled air service should we work that out. Over time, should that scheduled air service, when and hopefully when we get it, grow, at some point, FAA is going to say it's not safe, there's too much capacity, we're going to have to build a separate terminal at that point. FAA will come forward with some money, may have to go to the state, and we may have to bring up a little bit of money on our end to build a terminal on the south end, which is what I know a lot of people would like to see. And Andy and I, you know, both of us agree with that. That's what we'd like to see. We think that's a huge draw. But in the meantime, it's still needed, and I think that's what we need to get across. It's also a referendum the citizens voted for, and so I don't think it's a waste of money. I think it's certainly something we need to continue.
Ms. Link.
I share Jerry and Jared's concerns about this project and the juggling of the funds. You know, it looks like we're asking for an extra million and a half dollars on what was initially a four-and-a-half-million-dollar project. And I just don't see why this isn't something we couldn't go back to the drawing board and whittle down, which, you know, we do with some of these projects. I mean, we're about to vote on the Cooperative Extension Project, which has been whittled down from their initial request. You know, this is something that I don't think sees as much use as a facility like that sees. And, you know, if there is a future need for a terminal in another place, well, that's even more money that we'll have to come up with. So maybe we remove some of the bells and whistles from this facility, maybe cut the square footage down some, you know, make it a little... Get rid of some of the window dressing or whatever. You know, I've been in and out of small, itty-bitty airports, and, you know, when you're traveling, it's not about the fanciness of the accommodations, it's about getting in and out of there. So I would like to see us deny this and send it back for some redesign.
I'll make sure everybody has... You haven't spoken this yet, have you, Jerry?
I made a motion, a substitute motion.
You made the... But you've spoken to it, too.
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Handby first, and then we'll get to you. Okay.
And I'll be brief. I just, you know, I don't totally disagree with Commissioner Neesmith that we need perhaps some better communication between this board and the authority, but I think we have in place an authority and certainly a very participatory commissioner who participates in those authority meetings, who is keeping us posted, and a new management team that I think, here's what Commissioner Neesmith is saying about the communication. And we need that communication because it's such an important part of Athens, the airport is, and we all want it to be successful and need for it to be successful. And I'm hoping that we can move forward with this, because 11-years is a long time, and 11-years has ended up costing us some money that we're having to put back into it, which is the important thing to keep in mind. So I'm hopeful that this project will bring some good benefit to Athens and make our airport successful like we want it to be.
Ms. Neesmith.
Somewhere along the line, the scope of this project, somewhere between 2004 and now, the scope of this project completely changed. The project three of the 2005 Speedloss is that the commercial terminal facility at Athens-Ben Hips Airport includes renovation of the existing commercial terminal located on the north side of the airport to meet the needs of both current and FAA forecasted passenger employments. Well, number one, this is not a renovation. This is a whole new terminal. This is a demo and renovation, so that's not what the citizens voted for in 2004. The other thing is, I doubt that the FAA is forecasting much passenger employments at our airport right now. So again, if the spirit of this referendum is not being met by this particular initiative, I suggest we go back and find out not what we need for a commercial terminal, but what we need for what we need, what we are getting now. Go back to the drawing board and figure out what it is we really need instead of this idea of build it and they will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we vote, Mr. Remen, I'd like to ask you a question. You said that we could, that a project could be deemed unfeasible, no longer feasible, but if that should happen, what happens to those dollars that were collected?
Those dollars are reallocated among the other Speedloss projects.
Okay. But this is an '05 project, and all the '05 other five projects are finished, aren't they?
Except for the Business Corridor Infrastructure Project.
So it could go to Business Corridor Infrastructure. Okay. Mr.?
Well, just to clarify, although it seems that money is being moved around, that money will eventually go to those corridors because it's coming out of the 2011 capital project. So it's not like it's being lost. It's simply you're taking out a one pile and putting it into another and then replacing it later on.
Basically, it's going into a contingency fund. If that contingency fund isn't used, it'll go back to the original uses.
And it's coming out of surplus from the jail.
I'd like to draw everybody's attention to page 84 on our PDF, history item number two, line four. The funding for Speedloss Project 2005, project three, included a terminal facility on the south side of the airport, 10,000 square feet. So it hasn't changed from renovating. It changed from that to renovating back to a terminal. That's the order that it went, just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all ready to vote? Okay, this is a substitute motion.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms.
Neesmith.
So this is a motion to deny?
To deny.
It's your motion, yes, sir.
Yes.
Handby?
No.
Bailey?
No.
Harrod?
No.
Dickerson?
No.
Sims?
No.
Gertz?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Three yes, seven no.
Okay, that takes us back to the original motion, and the original motion is for the substitute motion.
Yeah.
Harry's second.
Have the motion in a second. So what were y'all asking?
Roll call.
Roll call. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarification, you said this is for the substitute motion. I think you meant the commission to find...
Commission to find option by the three commissioners, yes.
Handby?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Wright?
No.
Bailey?
No.
Neesmith?
No.
Seven yes, three no.
Okay, so the commission to find option is passed, and we will now move to item number 14, which is the North O'Conny Rivers Greenway Contract Construction Award.
I'll take that one.
Okay. Ms. Wright.
Just as a summary, that the information that the staff brought forward, I want to support the recommendation on page 96. Options 1A, B, and C, which involves rejecting the bids, rebidding the project, authorizing the mayor and appropriate staff to move forward, and then 2A, B is related to rejecting the second section of that bid process and starting over, and I would like to make a motion to support those.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the contractor who gave the very low bid, were they asked to explain why they had... Was it just a mistake in their bid?
Yes, after review, it was obviously a mistake.
Okay.
And GDOT was consulted on this, and they concurred.
But was the contractor specifically asked to explain, or was it just... Was there any communication directly with the contractor to ask them why they posted that?
No.
And why would we not reach out to them to ask them to clarify? I mean, it could have just ended up being a typo or something, which ends up removing them from consideration.
Well, we took the bid as it was presented and reviewed it, and, you know, it was considered structurally unbalanced. You know, it's not allowed per state law or the rules associated with that either. You know, you take the bid as you have it, you evaluate it, and it was so far off that it was obviously a mistake.
Yeah, I mean, because it's so far off, it makes me wonder if it was just an innocent mistake, but state law says we're not allowed to communicate with them in the aftermath.
But if Link doesn't take them out of consideration because they can rebid along with anybody else that rebids, so... Mr. Neesmith.
I would like to ask Mr. Williams, my remaining concern about this is, I think you can explain my concern or rectify it, is the fact that these three segments connect to nothing at this point. So what's the timing where they will then begin to start connecting to other segments of the trail?
Now, I'd be glad to... So the good news is, we've got an awful lot of trail that's about to be constructed, and it's a complicated process. Some segments of the trail have federal money in it, which we've been working through for years. Some of them are purely Sploß, and to try to pull them off all simultaneously would be a very difficult logistical feat. And so we've tried our best to try to align the completion of these segments as close as we can, and we're within three to six months on virtually all of them. I think the question you had at the agenda setting session, what does this mean for this project? It delays it for three months in the rebidding, but it actually moves the completion date closer to the completion date of the next available segment, if my memory serves me. And I'll certainly be glad to share with all of you an aerial of the various segments and their anticipated completion dates, given this new information.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're to item number 15, which is the...
Was there a second? I don't think I had a second.
Well, I thought it's my... Yeah, Ms. Harrod, okay. I thought we had a second. Item number 15 is the Cooperative Extension Service Center. So who would like to start that? Mr. Neesmith?
I would. It's in my district, so I'll start. There's been a lot of conversation about this, and I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding about some very important facts. One of the things that's going around is that this site was the last on the site-selection committee's list. That's simply not true. It was tied for second. The one above it was, let's see here, it was Research Drive, which was incredibly expensive and not affordable. Another important aspect of this is, this site is going to give the Extension Center everything they wanted, including space for a pavilion. Not the pavilion itself. The money in here is not to build a pavilion, but there's space for it, demonstration garden, shared parking spaces with the fire station, 119 parking spaces. What a plant sale that will be. The office space is exactly what they want, a large auditorium. Now, that's the good part. There's no other site that was identified in the last part of this, and I'm going to let Harry correct me at any time here, that provided all of the features that the Extension Center asked for. As far as I'm concerned, if the Extension Center asked for these and we had a public referendum to get these, that's what we need to do. The other thing is about accessibility. And as I related to you the other day, perhaps it was in an email, from Winterville Elementary School to the new location via the Loop is 19 minutes, 13.2 miles. To the current location, it is 16 minutes. It's a three-minute difference. It's 8.8 miles, and that's because of accessibility to the Loop. There are concerns about traffic on Atlanta Highway. If you take the Loop, the northern Loop, the outer Loop on the north side, and come into the mall, you can get off on the rightmost lane, which is the mall-access lane. There is not a single light, not a single stop sign between the Loop and this location, except the stop sign at Cleveland Road on Maryland Farmer Way. So traffic will not be a problem. Bus stops, the bus drivers will learn this very fast, and so will the people who want to come here. So I think that this concern about accessibility, first of all, is a misperception because people don't come to the west side and see it, like I do and Mike does. And second, that once they see this magnificent facility, it's worth another minute or two to get there. So I'm going to support this, and I'll just go ahead and make the motion to accept this initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith. Mr. Bailey, and then who else is going to want to speak?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Athens and the University of Georgia have a long history of cooperation in many areas. Cooperative Extension Service is just one of the many programs that we work with UGA on, and our community enjoys many benefits from the Extension Service. And I've used them, and I think they do a great job, very proud of the work they do. The ties between UGA and Athens-Cart County go even deeper. Many of our Athens-Cart County staff, elected officials, went to school at UGA or worked for the university or work for them now. A good example of that would be former county commissioner Tal Duval, who is also the director and associate dean of the Cooperative Extension Service at the UGA College of Agricultural and Environmental Sciences. By the way, Commissioner Duval was instrumental in creating the Cooperative Extension. And for what he did at UGA with the Cooperative Extension and what he did for our county, of course, we owe him a lot of debts. I think a lot of people don't know all that Tal did for this community, but our community obviously sees a value in what the Cooperative Extension does, as evidenced by the strong support of our citizens voting for the Speed Loss referendum to provide new facilities. In the spirit of cooperation, our citizens have ponied up the money to build that extension. However, we've had a difficult time, you've heard the discussion, finding a piece of property in the county that's well-suited to the needs and the mission of the Cooperative Extension Service. Even those who support the Cleveland Road location will admit it's not the best choice. It's not on the bus line, it's hidden off of a major congested highway in a small commercial park. It's not a common destination for our citizens. The site in question is off Highway 78, in the furthest reaches of western Cart County, instead of being more centralized and closer to its clients. Those users include 4-H students at Cedar Shoals High School, which is a little off of Highway 78, pretty much in the furthest reaches of the eastern part of Athens-Cart County. One of my fellow commissioners, Gary here, sent an email last week to rest of the commission defending the proposed location, as he did now, and he feels very strongly about it, and I understand that, but he challenged the rest of us to come up with a better site, an alternative. And I wish I had a good answer for him. I don't. I just know that the site that we're voting on this evening is not one that will best serve the community. University of Georgia is the largest land-grant university in the country, also has more property than any other university in the country. They also have over 4,000 acres of property in Athens-Cart County, making them one of the largest, if not the largest, landowners in this county. When asked to help with procuring an appropriate site for the extension facility, Athens-Cart County was turned down, despite the fact that the Cooperative Extension Service is an outreach of the University of Georgia. And we share responsibility for it. We're willing to help build a building, but they really weren't very helpful in us finding a site. And I really am very disappointed in that. With all that laid out, I'd like to make two observations about the site selection. The basic tenet of the argument used by the people supporting this is that it's just a perception that this property is far away and inconvenient for those who use the service. It's just plain false. It's about the worst place you could put it in the county. It's out there. It's way out there. The fact that we requested, second point, the fact that we requested that UGA, huge landowner, assist us with the procurement of a site for the program that they administer, and they refuse to help us is a shame. Makes me embarrassed of my own alma mater. Despite all the work put into site selection and the claim that the Cleveland Road location will save us money, I firmly believe we can do better, and I'd like to see us deny this proposal and find a better site. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Link?
Yeah, I share Commissioner Bailey's concerns about this. I've had many, 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 many conversations with citizens about this project and the proposed location over the months. And the folks who use that center roundly object to this far-flung location. I've submitted to y'all my feelings on it. I want to confirm a couple of things. Commissioner Neesmith said that this was tied for second. I think that's kind of inaccurate. It was tied for second in a matrix that ranks, had many, many different criteria, but the actual sighting criteria gave it bottom marks. You know, granted, this on paper seems like a perfect site because it'll give them everything they want, but the first rule in real estate is location, 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 and this fails that rule. And also, I fear that this site violates our MOU with the UGA Extension Office. The MOU specifically states that the site that we give to the Cooperative Extension Office be acceptable to all, and this is not acceptable to those who use this service or even program the facility. And from what I understand, UGA was not asked to procure or to come up with an appropriate site. We approached them with one specific site, and they denied that particular site. I'd like to see us go back to a process by which we get all interested parties at the table and take a look at many, many options, not just the one, the 14 that appeared on that site matrix, but there are definitely other sites. You drive up and down Atlanta Highway, you drive up and down the east side, and there are plenty of properties. We might want to consider adaptive reuse. And my most serious concerns off the bat are with the lack of transparency in the process. That user group was not consulted in the final steps in making the site decision, and those who actually work at and run the facility were not even given the courtesy of a phone call to let them know that this decision had been made. They were expected to just keep up with our agenda items and know what's going on. The folks who work for 4-H out of that office were away this month at both their state and their national congresses. So they not only were unaware of the project, but they were unaware to make their participants aware that this decision was being made. This timing suggests a fast-tracked and closed-door decision process that doesn't reflect well on our local democracy. We heeded our citizen outcry when folks objected to the proposed sighting of a tennis center at Bishop Park, and we moved that site, and everybody's happy now. And yeah, we spent a little more money to do it, but we determined that a tennis center, which is arguably utilized by a different demographic, a more homogenized demographic, we decided that they were worth it. This facility serves a diversity of our citizens and citizens from all over the county. You know, we do have tennis courts located at other places around town. You know, we had, the SPOSS projects include a $75 million jail and a $25 million classic center, both of which have extremely high operating costs, yet we were more than willing to spend that kind of money on them. This center is, many of its operating costs are through volunteers, so there's not even a high operating cost for this center. There were open houses for this project, but apparently they were sparsely attended. I never got notice of these open houses, and I follow those public notifications pretty closely, and I definitely would have shown up for this one. You know, and seeing as there, we've gotten so many folks objecting to this, not only tonight, but we've gotten well over a dozen emails from citizens who object to this location. Obviously, they were not aware of those public input opportunities. It's not served by public transit. That's extremely concerning. And I also would like to advocate, you know, if we can't find a truly centrally-located or UGA-adjacent site, that we consider the east side. There is a desperate, desperate need for this kind of facility on the east side, this kind of agricultural community center. You see the kind of impact that the West Broad Market Garden and the Williams Farm have had on their surrounding communities, and a facility like that could serve that same role and be truly transformative. And considering the desperate need for youth development programming on the east side and some of the discipline problems and the gang problems that we've had in that particular area, this project in an east-side location could have a much greater impact than the current, than its current programs even allude to. So I will not be voting to move this center out to the far west side, and I really think we would be doing this entire community a terrible, terrible disservice, and we would be going against the obvious will of the people who utilize this facility, and that's simply not fair and anti-democratic.
Mr. Hamby?
Thank you. I think there's, I mean, this is pretty much democratic as you can get. We're about to take some votes on an issue, and I don't know what more appropriate than that, but I will say this. This process has been transparent. We have had several, at least a couple of work sessions on this. It's been on our agenda-setting, it's been on a SPOSS ballot initiative. The public hearings were notified. I saw the email. I know some people that went to the public hearings, and at some point, it becomes incumbent upon, if a crowd needs to be there, it becomes incumbent upon, you know, whoever in charge of the Cooperative Extension to make sure a crowd gets there. Certainly, we've received emails about the issue, so somebody has known about us as voting on this. It has been transparent. But, you know, I'm sitting here thinking a little bit about Commissioner Duval, and like many of us, and especially Commissioner Gertz and Commissioner Sims, and Commissioner Sims served with him, but you served with everybody. So, and Commissioner Dickerson worked with Commissioner Duval, and from what I remember about Commissioner Duval and what I do remember about Commissioner Duval, and he lived for quite a long while in my district and is still doing well, and he did help the Cooperative Extension quite a bit. But as a commissioner, I remember Commissioner Duval was the type of commissioner who, once he was presented with the facts, once staff went through all the details, once some issues were put on hold a couple of times to look at more details, look at more, in this instance, properties, Commissioner Duval was the type that recognized, okay, we need to make a decision, or this will cost us more money in the long run, which we saw from a previous issue how that has played out. And as Commissioner Neesmith has said, and Commissioner Duval was right about that, about his approach in those situations, get the facts, see what the benefits are going to be, and Commissioner Neesmith laid out the benefits. Not everybody's going to be pleased with this, and that's going to be something in 18 months that they may be pleased with it, once they see what we are able to build. Remember, the tennis folks weren't pleased with it going to east side, but now they are. So I think we're moving in the right direction to help the Cooperative, to be beneficial for the Cooperative Extension, but also the community.
Thank you. Mr. Harrod, and got Mr. Gertz, and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Neesmith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I have several things to say, and I'm not sure that they're necessarily coherent, but that might not be different from most occasions.
It's going to stop me.
Yeah, that's very true. I do think that the process has been transparent. I don't have a problem necessarily with the process, but I do not like the location where we've ended up. Everybody knows what my position's been all along, where I think this should be placed. And I think part of the reason, obviously, at the moment, we're in a bit of a bind because of the price of this, but it seems to me that part of the reason that we're addressing this right now is because of the way in which we, as a commission, scheduled the various different Speed Loss projects to be approved. When we first started, or when the groups first started looking at land sites 18 months or so ago, they looked at what was available. There are different pieces of property that are currently available that may in fact be a much better location than where we're talking about right now. And I understand that at some point, we have to put an end, we have to make a decision. But I'd rather spend a little bit more money and get the locational decision correct and put this somewhere where people are actually going to use it. And I understand what's being said about how far places are or are not from other places in the county, but the people that are primarily going to use this are telling us they don't want where we're thinking about putting it.
Thank you. Mr. Gertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this conversation, as it's gone on for a number of weeks, kind of demonstrates something that you find just in public dialogue generally, which is that people become accustomed to the norms as they exist today, and change is difficult. And I would hasten to say that I think if we were looking at any site, there would be those among the public who would find that a challenge compared to what they've experienced. But of course, when this was approved by the voters in 2011, it was approved with a certain set of criteria. The need was for a five-to-seven acre site, a building that could house a 200-person meeting room, a number of parking spaces, area for a future pavilion, and these amenities. And unfortunately, acreage of that size simply isn't as available within the core of town as some may like. And so, you know, we've looked at this kind of series of options, kind of narrowing to the few that we've seen in recent months. And so I've tried to spend some time objectively thinking, you know, well, what would this be like? And I spoke at the agenda-setting meeting about driving directly down West Broad Street to the Atlanta Highway and taking a right on Cleveland Road. And subsequent to that, I drove at about 5:00 in the afternoon to the site via the Loop from my home. And from Pulaski Street to this site, it was a 12-minute drive. I think as Commissioner Neesmith mentioned, if you stay in that far right lane when exiting the Loop, you can go around the rear of the mall, down Maryland Farmer Way, and then you're at the site. When I took that trip, I doubled back and parked at the mall because there's a bus stop at the corner of the Mall Loop Road and Maryland Farmer Way, immediately at the corner, and there's a sidewalk down the entire length of Maryland Farmer Way. So I wanted to walk the sidewalk and just see, well, what's that experience like? And it's not quite 800 feet. It's about the same as walking from the front of City Hall to the corner across the street from the arch. So it's for all practical purposes and accessible site. There's not a bus stop in front of it, but again, that's not to say there couldn't be a bus stop in front of it. You know, I'd certainly be interested in asking Butch McDuffie's department if that bus, rather than routing around the Mall Loop Road, could simply be routed down Maryland Farmer Way, down to Cleveland, and take a left at that light. I'd love to explore whether that's an option. And one of the things, of course, we talked about in our transit study results a couple of months ago, is the prospect of that being one of the routes that we would double in frequency if we had funds available, as well we might through T-SPL. frequency if, if we had funds available, as, as well we might through T-SLOSS. So I, I don't see it as inaccessible at all. I, I don't experience it as inaccessible, but it is different. And then there's no doubt that it's different. But any site would be different. A Lexington Road site, a Gaines site would be different. But this does provide us exactly what was requested in 2011, with accessibility by transit or by car.
Mr. Neesmith.
Just one other thing. The other location that had been mentioned is Lexington Road, which would be exactly five miles from the current Ag Extension Center to the east. So it is equally inconvenient to people on the west as this one is to people in the east. By the way, I've had several calls from master gardeners who told me they want the Cleveland Road location, because it provides them the amenities that they need. And one of them, of course, said, by the way, I live in the west. Others said they just want the amenities. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just had a couple of things to add. I guess the way I look at this is it's somewhat of an unintended consequence to our land use plan. We pushed all the density into town, and people want to see this in town, but that's sort of, there isn't anything in town to have. So logically, you'd have to put it outside the Loop. I mean, that's the parameters. And of course, I agree with Commissioner Harrod. I would, if there was an East Side, more agriculturally suitable site, I totally would go for it. The reality is, is we've done our due diligence. I mean, I spent the last two weeks searching all the tax records. I've driven up and down that, I drive that road regularly, trying to rack my brain. I've lived here 48 years, my husband's lived here 53 years. I mean, we were born and raised here. I don't know where else there's property that meets this. We could wait six or seven months, and maybe a piece of property might come available, but there's no guarantee. We're certainly not going to grow any more land, so, you know, that, that's a concern. I think the, the biggest thing I think about as a former staff member is, and having built a facility that I wish I had built larger for programmatic needs, is, is that, you know, you've got a bird in the hand. You've got the programmatic ability to do everything you want to do at this site. And yeah, it's not great. Locate, you know, when you look for a house, when you look for a place to place your business, you look at location, the size of it, and the cost. And sometimes there's a compromise. And in this case, we might, the compromise, to me, seems to be the location. We heard tonight from one of our citizens that came up that he's never even been to the Cooperative Extension Service. I mean, it is a destination. If you don't have a reason to go, you don't go. It's like the landfill. You may not have a reason to go to the landfill. It's all the way on the other side of town. But if you have to go, you're going to go. And we are all, we are the smallest land-based county in Georgia, and today I drove it with my kids. I drove a couple of routes just to see. I wanted to drive it again. I drove it a different time than I did last time. But I drove from my house, and I'm furthest out from any commissioner in here. I live out on Morton Road. If I sneeze, I'm in Oconee one way and Oglethorpe the other. I drove from that point through town to the in-town site. I left at 1:05, I arrived at 1:28. Took me 23 minutes, and it was 11 miles to the in-town site, the current site. Then I drove the opposite way coming home, because I was already out the other way, so I went out to the new site. I left at 3:46 PM, and I drove the South Loop. So I didn't go the North Loop, actually went the opposite way. And I'd always take Whitehall to avoid all the extra traffic lights and stuff on College Station. And I drove all the way back. I, I left at 3:46 PM, I arrived at 4:08 PM. That's 22 minutes, and it was 16 miles. It's negligible in the grand scheme of things, I guess is my point. And I, and I guess I'd just point to, what is our priority? When we, when the criterias were set, there was no weight based on, you know, is cost more important than size, is location more important than both of those? There wasn't. It was, these are the criteria, how does it fall out? And if you look at the sheet that staff gave us, and, and the user group and the, the site selection committee gave us, it, it drops, it's at the top. So I'm not sure, you know, we're, I like to support what our citizens want, but we also have a citizen committee, and they rated this. And so I'm, I'm just at a loss as to what else we could do. And, and waiting longer, we already know what's going to happen. I mean, the airports cost us another million and a half by waiting, so.
Anybody that hasn't spoken want to speak? Mr. Sims.
Yes, ma'am. As chairman of the Site Selection Committee, and since it has been intimated that this was done in the dark, I do take exception to that. And the fact that when we had these meetings, the staff of each one of these, the fire department and the Corporate Extension Office, were present at the meetings. Any questions that we needed from them, we asked them. It wasn't one of those things that was done with us making decisions without having information coming from the people that were going to use it. We even asked if you had your choice, where would you rather be? And it was intimated that we, they'd loved, would have loved to have been on Gaines Street Road. Unfortunately, the cost of that particular piece of property prohibited us from moving in that direction. And even, it was intimated that we would even take a smaller building if we could do that. And that's not in our, you know, domain. We've decided on the scope of what it's going to be, and that's what we were looking at. We did have public meetings. They were advertised. If people miss the advertisement, that's, you know, there's a lot of things that you miss in your life. But to say that these were done without a public being involved in it is completely erroneous. Now, having done site selection longer than anybody else, let me mention the tennis court, the tennis building, for instance. The recommendation that came from the tennis, from the site selection for the tennis court, was to build it on Bothwick Davis Road. But the leader at the time made a decision, and it was moved to where it is. But it was not from the Site Selection Committee. And then later on, after it was built and some thought went into it, it was regretted that it got put where it was, because you have to find the tennis center. Yes, this is not highly visible. Yes, it would be nice if we could just take trees down and whatever we could do so that we have a big neon sign that says, here it is, here it is. But that's not what it's about. One of the things that we looked at was the dollar bill. And the cost of jointly putting this facility with the fire station was the reason that it has landed where it is, because there's going to be some costs that we can come in almost at budget if we do it in a joint venture. I would rather for it to be where these people want it, but, you know, they don't know why they want it either, because we've looked at places. I had a call just this afternoon that talked about another building on Newton Bridge Road that was an existing building that might be retrofitted. And, you know, again, we don't know what the cost of it is, because that information was just, and it is going to be sent to me, but I think it's going to be a little late, because I think we're going to make a decision tonight. But, you know, I know, one of the things that we talked about and mentioned as well was the piece of property at the corner of Buddy Holly. Yeah, Buddy Holly.
Buddy Christian.
Buddy Christian, Buddy Holly, the rock and roll man. Buddy Christian Way and, and the Way of the Road. We own that property, but it's in the airport overlay. So, you know, it's probably an ample piece of property, but the fact is where it's located. So, you know, the effort has been made. I mean, we've gone through and looked at so many different pieces of property. And again, we used the matrix to, to create the final decision that we made. You know, again, I would love for it to be somewhere else, but from what we've, we've gone through, you know, time and time again, and all we do is keep putting it off, keep putting it off, we've got to start making a decision about moving forward, because even with the fire station, and it's already, we know where it's going to be located, there's going to be some costs if we continue to delay this.
Have you spoken yet?
I have not.
Go ahead.
I would like to call the question.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. The question's been called.
I'll second that motion.
Second to call the question. All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
All in, well, let's have a roll call vote on the question, Ms.
On calling the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Wait, this is on calling the question or the actual?
No, we've already called the question. This is on, this is on the vote. I'm sorry.
So we need to say?
I thought we, I thought we asked.
I thought we had two.
Huh? I thought we had a voice vote.
We did. But then you said, now we'll vote to call the question, and we'd already voted. So that's why I was confused. So we're voting now?
We, we are now voting on the question.
That's what I thought.
Which was to accept this?
Accept the recommendation of the state.
Okay.
Starts with Jerry.
Okay.
It should start with Jerry, because he made the original motion.
Well, I'll leave that up to Ms. Jean.
Okay. So this is about on the location, not the call of the question, on the location.
Was there a voice vote?
Voice vote, call the question, yes.
I'd like to vote no on calling the question. I have, I have an additional question.
Should we have a roll, roll?
Roll call on calling the question.
Okay.
Wait a minute, let's, let's make sure everybody, Andy, are you asking that we have a roll call on the, on the question?
Melissa said she did, she wanted to vote against it, so I suggest we have two votes. One is the roll call on calling the question, which will terminate debate. And assuming that passes, then we have to have a second vote on the actual motion. Yeah.
I understand. I'm going to make a ruling that after the fact, to, for somebody to, to vote no, I think it's, I, I just don't feel comfortable going back when someone wants to vote no on a question that's already been settled.
That's your prerogative, Madam Mayor, so we can move on.
There was no question for a no. No one ever asked for a no. We just moved forward without them asking for a no.
I said all in favor, all opposed. And it was.
And we dove in.
Okay. Since, since there seems to be so much tension, for lack of a better word, we will call, we will have a roll call vote on whether or not we will call the question, Jean.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bale?
Yes.
Harrod?
No.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Seven yes, three no.
Okay, so we have our location for the fire station and cooperative extension. We will, we will now go to our public. We'll have, we, we have three items that are recommendations from the planning commission, and we handle those one at a time. So we'll go to item number 16. And anyone who, who wants to speak to us on item number 16? Does anybody need a break? We're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. We're going to need to go through the public input, and also the commissioners will have to vote whether or not to accept the withdrawal. So would anybody like to speak to item number 16? Mr. Haynes, did you want to speak to us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Scott Haynes. I work for Williams and Associates. We're the agent for Athens Ridge Apartments LLC. Here before you tonight to ask for withdrawal for the special use permit. We humbly ask that this be withdrawn without prejudice. It is for financial reasons that this project is no longer moving forward, and we all believe that's unfortunate, because this is something that the community could, could benefit from. I do want to just briefly thank staff for their help with this item. The planning commission and this body brought their time and consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Anyone else wish to speak to item number 16? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. And Mr. Neesmith, is this in your district?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to move to withdraw this, this item.
We have motion and second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to add a comment that, that if this does move forward, I'll be supportive of the bus also looping through there, so that the youth can go out and visit the people at the senior center.
That would, that would probably be a nice collaboration.
I just thought of that earlier.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, item number 17 is next, and it's the request of Jeff Snowden for Snowden Tarski Real Estate Holdings to rezone from single family to a commercial general, and this is for an office, proposed office. Would anyone like to speak to this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, staff. My name is Jeff Snowden, and I am a partner at Snowden Tarski Real Estate Holdings, which is a division of Snowden Tarski Corporation. We are a marketing services firm. We've been here about 15 years. Since we were founded, we maintained an office in downtown Athens in the Franklin House, which we loved and very much enjoyed. We enjoyed the relationships and the times that we've had there. But like many businesses, we found a need, we found an opportunity to move our business to a more permanent home that suited, as our business has evolved, that suited the needs that we have and the needs that we predict going forward in the future. An opportunity came about to purchase the old Civitan Club off of Whitehead, the old Whitehead Civitan Club, which is off of Jefferson Highway. And we took that opportunity, and we jumped on it early, maybe even prematurely, but we knew that that opportunity would not remain there very long. We started the process to have the property rezoned so it could be used for commercial use for our organization, and have gone through that process with the fantastic, fantastic assistance and help of the planning department that held our hand. We are not real estate people and have zero ambitions of doing it ever again, but it was nice while it lasted. And the staff over there walked us through this entire process. And for a little business like ours, which I'd love to promise you that we're going to employ 50 people and, you know, start selling drones and 3D printers, but that's not going to happen. We're a small marketing services firm. The best that I can tell you is that we will be quiet, we will have a small environmental footprint, we will be good neighbors, we will try to use as many vendors in the area that we do and help prop up other small businesses with the type of services that we do, using freelancers. We'll try to be good citizens. And in the process of putting this together, we have spent time with the neighborhood association of one of the adjoining neighborhoods that's there. We have spent time with our commercial neighbor, which would be Japanese Motor Works, and he helped repair the tailgate on the back of my truck. And we have, we have actually walked around the neighborhoods and see where we would be part of this. But I also want to underscore this with this, is that us moving to this Oconee Heights, that neighborhood area, is not necessarily moving. I'm also a neighbor. I live off McLaRoe Drive. This is a five-minute walk to my house. My kids, my oldest son, will start Whitehead Elementary in the fall. And this makes a very good home, a very good neighborhood for our business, and I ask that you approve this, so we can give our company a great home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snowden. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and before we start, will you go ahead and read the ordinances, Mr. Bearman?
Yes. The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of the parcel of land at 204 Firefighter Court, currently designated as community institutional and corridor business to traditional neighborhood and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning the two parcels of land at 202 Firefighter Court and 204 Firefighter Court from RS8 Single Family Residential and CG Commercial General to CN Commercial Neighborhood and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Mr. Bailey, this is in your district.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to make a motion or discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to say a few things. This property has been basically a commercial property for years, but was zoned residential a long time ago when we first started doing our zoning. And basically, it's a non-conforming property, but is, it is commercial. And I think it's a valid request to go ahead and, and rezone it. It's also a very good use for this building that currently is being underutilized and has the potential for being a location for misdeeds. It's, it's kind of a hidden property where somebody can come back there and vandalize things or, or perform shenanigans or whatever. But I think that the, the parties that are interested in opening, moving their business there are going to be good tenants, and they'll be good use for this property. I think they'll also be very good neighbors for the residences that are pretty close by. So I, I support this, and I think that it's, it's a good move for the area and, and a good move for the, the owners, too. I think that they'll be very happy out there. are going to be good tenants, and they'll be good use for this property. I think they'll also be very good neighbors for the residences that are pretty close by. So I support this, and I think that it's a good move for the area and a good move for the owners, too. I think that they'll be very happy out there.
You will make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning of this property.
Of motion?
Wait, two? Okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Future development, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change to the use map.
Okay. Who's the second? Here, okay. Have a motion and second, and this is for the approval of the future development map. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning residential to commercial neighborhood.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and second. You want some discussion this night?
Since I wasn't here for the agenda meeting, I did watch the video of it, and I know that Commissioner Neesmith pointed out some concerns about the straight rezone, and, you know, while I certainly agree that this is ideal use for the property, a small office, and it seems like there's been some work put into notifying the neighbors about the rezone. You know, it's not about what's planned to happen now, but what could happen in the long-term future. So I'd just like to ask Mr. Griffin if he could give us a little rundown of the allowable uses for commercial neighborhood property.
Certainly, the office use is proposed, and it generally comes without restriction. Retail, restaurant, office use is normally right at the 10,000-square-foot maximum limit. You can do some very limited auto repair, but it's limited at 2,500 square feet. Personal care homes, you know, things like that. There is, you know, some limited single-family. You could not do multifamily on the property without it being a mixed use with ground floor commercial. Things like bottling plants potentially, but again, a lot of those more intense uses, bottling plants, auto repair, those are generally restricted at 2,500 square feet, which is about half the size of a current convenience store footprint. You know, the QTs and the racetracks now come in at about five or six. So it's a very small... 2,500 feet is about the size of what convenience stores used to be 25 years ago. So there are some uses. This did go through as a straight rezoning, and we looked at it closely, and I think it was from a staff and planning commission standpoint, the combination of its long, continuous use is kind of a commercial slash institutional operation, and the fact that it's very, very limited with regard to visibility and access. We didn't feel like it was a real threat for potential, you know, the higher intensity commercial uses that may impose a threat on a neighborhood. And if there was to be a change in that direction, all of the required buffering and other things would have to be implemented at the time of use change.
What if there was some future combination of those CG lots leading up to the... I mean, what kind of impact would that have?
It would still... Any of the uses that cross the zoning district boundary would be restricted to the size. I mean, if, for example, Japanese Motor Work acquired this property at some point in the future and combined them together, they still have a jurisdictional zoning line that would restrict, you know, even if they wanted to expand their business, they could only expand it up to 2,500 square feet based on the use.
And the building seems to sit pretty much right on the lot line. Does it sit within the buffer that's currently allowed? I mean, what are the buffers for CN?
Three options adjacent to the Putters subdivision. There are some houses immediately behind it that are very close, and I know that the applicant did talk to them, but it's an option of a 10-foot landscape planted buffer with a 6-foot fence in the middle of it, or a 20-foot wide full landscape buffer without fence, or 50-foot natural or undisturbed buffer. You know, obviously, I don't think they're going to meet the 20 or the 50. There is, you know, when they go through this use change with us, there will be things that have to be brought into compliance. One of those things is the buffer, and it's our understanding, although it's not something you're looking at this evening, is that they may actually, based on recommendations from the neighbors behind them, pursue a variance through the hearings board not to install the 6-foot fence as part of a buffer planting at the request, actually, of Putters in this case.
So if it were to, in the future, be sold and redeveloped for another use, those buffer requirements would kick in?
Yes.
If, say, it was demolished and...
And part of that's going to be a product of a variance. I mean, if a variance were granted, the variance is run with the property to eliminate. Generally, if you're going... If there is a desire of the hearings board, if there is a variance asked for, and it is to be granted, they have the ability to grant that with a condition that is only based on the use in question at this time, and any further change of use would have to bring it into compliance again. But that's all speculation at this point. There has not been any requests for variance yet.
Okay, anybody else with any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the approval of the rezoning? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have one more item tonight that we have to vote on, and it's... Bill, would you read the ordinance for item number 18? Oh, wait a minute, we need to have public input, and this is on a planning commission recommendation. Item number 18, we haven't had public input yet.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to accessory structures and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Berryman. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to item number 18? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and we have a commission-to-find ordinance from Mr. Neesmith and Ms. Wright. Which one of y'all wants to speak?
And Commissioner Gertz.
Oh, I didn't realize it was another one on there.
I can do a quick summary. Basically, in working with Brad, it was, it's the very same thing that the planning commission brought forward, and we're changing the percentage of an accessory building size to, in relation to the main structure, which is typically the home on the property. So if you go to page 157, in describing the setback of the yard requirements, by saying that if the structure is no more than 12 feet high, it can be within the 3 feet, and that's traditionally in some of the older neighborhoods, that small garage that's been close, people are used to seeing it, and that keeps it from becoming a potential one and a half or two-story. So this is keeping it with the traditional character and yet allowing the new size, where some people put carports on them, and their houses are so small, they can't increase those necessarily. But it still has intact what the planning commission brought forward, but just getting that height part in there.
Thank you.
And one of the other ones in the commission-to-find option might want to add to that.
Okay. Ms. Link?
I'm going to thank you all for putting that together, because, yeah, I did, you know, I've had concerns with the initial proposal that came through a couple months back, and we sent it back. I really feel like, you know, we definitely need to amend the accessory structure language and allow a great deal more flexibility for these structures. But I had real concerns about, you know, not having a maximum footprint, you know, and I think this is a really nuanced approach that makes a great deal of sense, you know, based on lot size. And, yeah, the text amendments or the commission-to-find option makes even more sense. You know, I still had concerns about that height. You know, that looming height has a huge impact on folks' backyard. We're seeing it already. You know, all of a sudden, your vegetable garden's in shade because your neighbor built a garage. So I think this should help with that quite a bit, and I hope we can talk more about these structures and their uses in the future.
Ms. Herod?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to thank the three commissions that put this together, but... And I think this is a definite improvement. I have one question and a little bit of a concern, and that is not with regards to the height, because I think you've done a great job in addressing that. The concern I have is that it's only a 3-foot setback, and I think that's fine if you're building a garden shed. If you're building a pool house next to your swimming pool, I think that's a bigger issue for your neighbors. And so I'm wondering why the 3-foot was chosen and whether there's any flexibility that you might consider in maybe slightly increasing that by a little bit.
Who are you directing that to, Andy?
I guess one of the three commissioners.
Ms. Neesmith?
I think what the nuance here is, let's see if this answers your question. The 3-foot, you can have a 3-foot setback if the building is no higher than 12 feet. If it's higher than 12 feet, then the underlying setback rules for that residential zone apply. So the 3-foot setback isn't for just any accessory structure. It's for the short accessory structures. Anything taller than 12 feet, it's the underlying zoning setback rules, which is new.
And I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just saying that I think, you know, a shed that somebody might go into fairly quietly is different from being, you know, having that 3-foot off your property line if you're the neighbor is a little bit different from a pool house where you may have people running in and screaming and splashing around and doing all that kind of stuff.
I think it's coming from the traditional setback that has already been in our community. And Brad can probably speak to that a little bit better than me. I mean, I see it, but he can describe it better.
The 3-foot setback that appears in this text amendment is the language that has appeared in the ordinance since 2000, when we adopted the new code. At that point, anything that was 15 feet tall or shorter, up to 15 feet, was allowed to be at 3 feet, and if it went over 15, it went to full setback. So I think what the commission-to-find option does here is, by pushing down to 12, what it's really... It's eliminating in two ways. It's eliminating the much larger structure in terms of width, because the way we measure height, I mean, if you've got an eight- or nine-foot ceiling height, to get, you know, to get a roof on it, if you're very wide in the footprint, you're going to go over 12 to the average height of the roof. And it also eliminates, we've seen some that have really, it's been tight, but you can effectively get a second story built into a roof, you know, a half-level at that 15-foot average height, and I think this effectively removes any ability to start building in that second story into the roof. But it's, the 3-foot has been in there from the beginning.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Just a clarification. So it says on page 157, section 91512, it said, the last line says, "and is no more than 12 feet in height." Is that, are we to understand that's the very top of it or the midpoint?
It's the midpoint of the roof.
Do you have to say midpoint, or is it just understood?
It's understood by the definition in building height in 92.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I'm ready to make a motion that we accept the commission-to-find option for the ordinance.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now is the time for all those folks out in the audience that have been dying to say something, to come talk to us. So anything that's not on tonight's agenda that y'all would like to speak to us about, now would be the time to come to the podium and let us hear from you.
Good evening. Jesse Hool, 260 North Chase Street. So I wanted to speak to you all about the proposed anti-discrimination ordinance and what we hope might also be a human relations code of ordinances. So I and many of the people I've been working with at AFRE, Athens for Everyone, and the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement are very encouraged by the Government Ops Committee taking this on and what's been happening so far to further the efforts initiated by the resolution you all passed earlier this year. And thank you Attorney Berryman... I'm sorry, I got like a really bad headache. Thank you Attorney Berryman for drafting the ordinance language to follow up on that resolution. While we think these are very important steps, we don't believe they go far enough. We believe that we need protections for people all over Athens Clark County and not just in bars and not just patrons of bars. We believe that we need protections for patrons of other businesses, and we also need protections for workers and tenants across Athens Clark County from discrimination. And while we can't enforce those protections the way we can with a liquor license, while those mechanisms might not be there for the Clark County government or local law enforcement, we can provide vulnerable people a means to hear their cases in a court of law in a way that they currently can't. So, for example, if you were denied a sale somewhere because you're gay, or if you were fired from your job because you got pregnant, or if you were denied housing because you come out as trans, there are zero protections for you on the federal level, the state level, or the local level. And there's no indication that anything's going to change on the state or federal level anytime soon. So what we would ask Athens to do is to add text to the ordinance, to create a code of ordinances that would provide further protections so that people at least have that means. Now then the question comes, is there anything else we can do? We believe, yes, the establishing of a human relations commission, which could be enacted through that code of ordinances. This is something I know that you've heard us talk about a lot, but this commission could hear people's concerns. It could advise them when appropriate, and it could make recommendations when applicable. So in the case of a bar where there is teeth, they can make a recommendation to the county government, so county officials will know what to do. But when there isn't, it would at least give someone who has a grievance the opportunity to know if their grievance is legitimate enough and to bring that forth in a court of law to strengthen their case. I know I'm running out of time, so representatives from Athens for Everyone and the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement would love to talk with you all further. I want to thank you all for addressing this very serious problem, which has gone ignored for so long in our community. But I would also ask you to please seize this opportunity to create something more comprehensive and effective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jordan Hobdi, and I now reside at 86 North Avenue. Would now be an appropriate time to pass these out to the mayors and the attorneys and the managers?
You could give it to our attorney, and he'll give it to us later.
There's one for everybody. I've been here previously to propose an idea for a parallel ordinance for marijuana in Athens Clark County. The ordinance would allow law enforcement officers to cite people for possession of marijuana rather than taking them to jail and charging them. There seem to be several commissioners who would potentially support this idea when we discussed it. I know Mayor Dunson and Attorney Berryman discussed it and commented on it regarding the legality, saying that it wasn't legal for ACC to enact this type of ordinance. We've seen Clarkston, Georgia, pass one recently, so in the reports that are going around, we faced out, we basically laid out all of the legal coding and all of the codes that would be followed to be able to implement a municipal court fine rather than charging and arresting somebody. The Federal Reserve found that nearly 47% of Americans could not afford a surprise medical bill, and I know many of you guys would not consider getting arrested for breaking the law likewise to a medical bill. But $400 in bail is similar to a surprise medical bill, and when people are forced to pay several hundred dollars, sometimes they can't afford that, and sometimes they get stuck in jail and they lose their jobs. And that doesn't even include, like, attorney fines, court fees, or the program costs, or whatever type of program they have to complete. So I think when we're talking about poverty and like, even like, keeping the youth out of gangs, sometimes it's not the youth that's participating. Sometimes it's their parents. And taking their parents out of the household is not really beneficial to the youth. That is going to only encourage them to join gangs and encourage them to do drugs because they don't have the parental figures there to guide them. So, and then it would also just ease the burdens of an overworked criminal justice system. Allowing police officers to write a ticket for marijuana possession would allow that single officer to have a much more efficient shift in stopping and fighting against harmful crimes. Arresting somebody takes several hours. There's a lot of processes that has to be done. So if they were just able to say, here's a ticket, like a parking ticket, they might be able to go stop something else from happening. It takes the courage of elected leaders to make a change. It is up to the people behind the rail to make the changes that will positively benefit this community. I know many of you believe that this is a state-level issue, and it's most definitely a statewide issue and a national issue, but it is a local issue as well, and it's time that we set the groundwork for the state and nation to follow. I look forward to working individually with all of you guys to implement this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask you all again, because it takes a while to get from the edges out, if you want to speak, to sort of queue up a little bit for us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate your audience. If you want objective information about marijuana, the internet is overflowing with it today. And you will hear from my friends at Students for Sensible Drug Policy later, and they will probably have more useful, objective information than I can provide you. So what I have is subjective. I have a short story. I have a friend who lives here in Georgia that I've known for many years.
Excuse me, did you give us your name?
I'm sorry, Zachary Garland, 250 Vista Drive. I'm sorry about that. I have a friend who lives here in Georgia that I grew up going to church with, who lives in shame and fear and pain and suffering because of our legal climate. I have this friend who has tried prescription drug after prescription drug after prescription drug for severe debilitating psychological disorder. This is not unique. There are many, many people with treatment-resistant disorders. disorders like my friend. And the psychiatric industry has not been of help or really of honest service, in my friend's opinion, after several years of trying to deal with the problems in the ways that are set out, the proper channels, the care that is advertised on TV. But it doesn't work, and it's exacerbated my friend's condition. My friend, several years ago, tried marijuana for the first time and got, like most people, palliative care, symptom relief, not treating the cause. But this has allowed my friend to do things like eat more than once a day, get out of bed, not lie in the fetal position in agony, having panic attacks constantly, not being chased by voices and suicidal thoughts all day. Millions of people have disorders like these, and they need access to whatever we can find out that can help them. If we find that people, that there are plants that people have been using for thousands of years for just this type of thing, but that it's difficult to, say, monopolize it, then I think we need to have the opportunity for people to explore that, to have access to research, and to be able to try to get help without having to hide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garland.
Hello, my name is Zane Bader. I reside at 541 Woodland Hills Drive. We all know that there are many arguments for why cannabis legalization should take place. Today, I'm not going to talk about the financial and social toll on society that prohibition has caused. I won't talk about how prohibition does absolutely nothing to prevent people from using drugs. I won't talk about how the enforcement of the drug war is racially biased. I won't talk about the numerous medical applications cannabis has, and I won't even mention how much revenue it generates. Today, I'll talk about something that hits close to home, alcohol and tobacco. If you were to walk through downtown on a Friday or Saturday night, how many people would you see smoking cigarettes, a drug that's known to cause 6 million deaths every single year? And let's be very frank here, how many underage kids are getting drunk in these bars every weekend? This shows that it's not a public health concern, nor is it a concern for enforcing current laws. So what's the reasoning behind this? I'm going to finish off with a quote from a senator discussing cigarettes during a hearing on alternative drug approaches that happened back in June. "Our single greatest success in America in reducing addiction to a deadly drug was done entirely without reliance on the criminal justice system." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Dunson, Commissioners and all. Sean Corley, 225 China Street, Department Number Five. I'll be brief, because most of my colleagues have said it better perhaps. Just assurance that this isn't sort of like a proposition from a transient sort of organization or something. Like, I've been in Athenian all my life, and I go to UGA now. And just that this is an effort to like engage our community and do sort of common sense sort of initiative, in that it'll allow our police officers more autonomy, more discretion, and being able to address this problem. And yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeremy Sharp. I would first like to ask y'all's permission. I'm not a citizen of Athens-Clark County, but I have been asked by several members who I consider colleagues to speak before you. Is it okay if I speak?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here, being late. I'm sure all of you guys have jobs and lots of stuff to do. I'm going to try to keep it very brief. I'd like to start off with a quote. This is also from Senator, Senator Cohen. He says, "Marijuana prohibition is dangerous because it breeds discontent for the law, and there's nothing more dangerous than discontent for the law." And so, guys, over the last few months, I was asked by some members of the Athens Students for Sensible Drug Policy Club here to compile kind of a how-to guide on how to get municipalities to pass measures that reduce the penalties for marijuana possession, simple marijuana possessions. And so, over the last four or five months, I've been working with law professors, attorneys, city attorneys, mayors, city councilmen, as well as students. And so, we've compiled a one-page brief, and it is a summary that was compiled by a student, not a lawyer, not a member of any bar, I'm not even in law school at this point. But I would strongly encourage you guys to look at it and look at our rationale and give it a second chance. We think that there's conflicting statutes within Georgia law, and the mayor of Clarkston has developed a scheme that will reduce these penalties. And so, we will be emailing these to each of you. If you get a chance, please talk to the city attorney. He does have one of those files. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we're going to come behind the rail now, and this is our report time. And the first thing I have on my agenda is adopt a highway. And as I say every time we do this, I'm sorry that we have to have people that clean up behind people that think it's okay to throw trash out their windows of their cars. And that group that's going to take care of some of that is the Linguistic Society of University of Georgia, and they're going to keep clean Hancock Industrial Boulevard and Hancock Road from Indian Hills to Winnebago Road. And I'm going to ask my colleagues if they will confirm me to be reappointed to another term on Georgia's Innovation Card Adjoint Development Authority.
So move, second.
Wait, you need to hear the rest of it. It's a four-year term.
Oh.
So do you still want to make the motion?
Still want to give you that'll keep your next mayor out of trouble for two years.
And give me something to wake up to do instead of go back to sleep. Does that motion is second, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate that. And I have a couple of appointments that actually came from our nominating committee that, where we interviewed people for boards and authorities. And these didn't get to you. One was a technical reason, and the other was that we had somebody leave, and I went back and polled the group to make sure that this was what they wanted to do. And so, these are appointments to the Department of Family and Children's Services. And we're going to reappoint Ms. Emily Bonas to a term that will expire in June 30, 2021. Excuse me, and Karina Gallagher to a partial term expiring on June 30, 2018. So would entertain a motion to...
So move, second.
Motion is second, on favor.
Aye.
Thank you. And then there's an appointment I just need to announce to you, that Glenn Coleman will be serving as our voting member on the Upper Oconee Water Basin Authority, replacing Gary Duck. And then I want to give you a list of a lot of people that I've put on a committee that I hope you're going to be pleased with. We have a bicycle master plan that's very outdated, and we need to relook at that again. And in discussion with the manager, we've been talking about this a lot. We want to get something, we want to get some recommendations back so that when we vote for SPOLOSS, that we'll have some things for SPOLOSS to look at. But we'll be hiring a consultant, so it just makes sense to get as much bang for the buck as we can. And so, I've expanded that committee to include pedestrian for sidewalks as well. So it will be a bicycle and sidewalk master plan group. And the members will be Mary Cook, Tyler Dewey, Tony Eubanks, Mayor Dodd Farrell, Daisy Mathis, Carol Myers, Eric Neesmith, David Ogunsoya, and Ken Sherman will chair it. And I also plan to ask the university for a nomination from the university community. And so I think that will be some real good work done out of that group. And now they'll receive manit reports. Anybody else? Mr. Williams, you have anything?
I'll just point out a couple of operating transfers for state court and juvenile court from general phone contingency due to overages in court indigent defense.
Okay. Mr. Berryman?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Maddox, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I'm happy to report that the Leisure Services Summer Camp Program Audit is complete. The audit committee received it last week, and the other copies for the remaining five commissioners has been placed in your box in the Clerk of Commissioners' office.
And I will tell y'all, I spent the weekend reading it, and it's a very good report. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we're down to our commissioners, and I'm going to mix it up a little bit tonight. I'm going to let Mr. Hamby start.
Oh, wow. I don't think I've ever gone first.
Well, that's why it's your turn. And then we'll go clockless and end up with Ms. Bale.
So I just have a quick item. I've had several people call me about and email me about some stormwater, new bills that have been issued, or new bills that are going to be issued. And I've gotten them placed on the, this audit thing that I guess our stormwater group is doing. It's my understanding that there's several hundred on this, on this audit thing that are waiting to be audited. Is there, is there a process about how we're going to work through, through all these audits for the stormwater? And if so, you don't want to answer, well, maybe you could answer me tonight if you know that, but...
Let me respond to you tomorrow, and I'll copy everybody on that approach.
I think it's kind of gotten a big concern for a lot of people in my district that have just recently gotten some notification about this.
And just to be clear, Commissioner Hamby, for those that are watching tonight, for anybody that wants to have their impervious surface measured by staff, Commissioner Hamby's referring to a field audit, that they can call a stormwater office and request that.
And I guess I'm concerned about that, Manager, is just because they're, they're behind several weeks in that. And I'm just, you know, they're anxious to get something settled, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. And do y'all mind if I interrupt you before you go? Because there was something else I wanted to give to y'all. I want to send something to the LRC Committee, and that's a review of the distance requirements regarding preschools and kindergartens for alcoholic package sales, and a review of the renewal requirements for the alcohol distance waiver permits. So, now, Mr. Neesmith, it's your turn.
Well, Mike sort of stole my thunder, because I don't recall receiving more phone calls and emails about anything except the cooperative extension in my four, four years, three and a half years here in stormwater. And I'm hearing not only from people who questioned the message that went out, the letter that went out, I'm also hearing from people who have had their onsite audits, because they don't understand things like a deck is an impervious surface, like the ground underneath the eaves of their house is an impervious surface, like they're storing water in cisterns from the water coming off the roof of their house, but the roof of their house is still considered an impervious surface, and they're paying a fee for that. The whole, in my three and a half years as a commissioner, stormwater is absolutely the number one issue that I, that I have with constituent services. And it has to do with the fact that constituents don't realize, and perhaps it's not even fair, that a stormwater easement through their property belongs to them. It's an easement, but it doesn't, it's their responsibility to keep that stormwater easement right, even if it's a detention pond. They have to keep the trees out of it. They have to keep the concrete structures in shape. Those are all at their expense. And I just think we need to take a step back and look at our, the way we are managing the fees and the use of the fees and citizen responsibilities for stormwater in this county. Because it's, these issues are not going to go away. The misunderstandings are not going to go away. And the other problem was, that letter that we sent out was, didn't even tell people that they could appeal or could ask for an audit. Didn't even cite a website for them to go to. And on the website, it's very difficult to find even how to appeal. We've got to get these communications right. We have a very serious problem. Our constituents have a very serious problem with our stormwater issues.
Mr. Neesmith, I have some same concerns you do. I've spent a lot of time exploring and studying this issue, and y'all may see it in the committee assignment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Bailey?
Madam Mayor, the only thing I'd like to say is, I got one of those letters too, but I could understand.
You're smarter than the average guy.
Well, you know, a lot of people don't realize that, that that money goes to do projects that benefit them directly and their neighbors, and they, they just don't really grasp the concept. So perhaps Commissioner Neesmith is right, we need a little more education.
Yes, sir. Ms. Riley?
Okay, my topic's a little less tension, lighthearted. I wanted to bring up the Georgia Senate Bill 103 that lets bars sell alcohol on one Sunday a year, but each county has to decide which Sunday that is. And it's from 12:30 to midnight. We still can't start any earlier than 12:30. And I, I think that because of its promotion for tourism and the opportunity to do that, we haven't set up a way to determine just what Sunday that might be. I know there's a lot of football weekends. We'd like to call that next Sunday it, but it takes planning. And I would like us to have it sent to committee or to be included in the special events review, because there could be a special event. Don't we have that in committee, GOC, looking at special events? So if we added that in there, it could be helpful for events that are happening, occur on Sunday, then we could determine that that is a Sunday that would allow that option that's been given to us to decide.
If and which. Well, I'm going to...
So it's Georgia's Senate Bill 103.
I'm going to make you very happy. I'm going to add that to what I just sent to the Legislative Review Committee to look at that.
Thank you. I am happy. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
On one of those Sundays.
Ms. Lynn?
Yeah.
Oh, did you have anything else?
Well, I did want to add, and I think Jared was touching on it, New Year's Eve is Saturday this year, and next year it's Sunday. But you can only pour from 12:30 to midnight, so I'm not sure if that would work on Sunday for New Year's Eve. Just a little research, sorry.
I want to thank the folks who came to the podium. I want to address the anti-discrimination ordinance that's working its way through the system, because I was out of town on family vacation when it came before GovOps. And I did communicate some of my concerns about it. I certainly don't think that, you know, what we are seeing before us is adequate. And I would advocate for a broader ordinance that addresses all businesses, not just bars. To focus simply on bars is discriminatory in and of itself, and the desperate need for a human relations commission to vet these accusations that might come forward. Other communities do this. They have these citizen boards, citizen commissions that vet these. It's not rocket science. It's not reinventing the wheel. So I just hope that we would get this right as we move forward. There are some real concerns in the bar owner community about this, you know, and there's a lot of potential for businesses to be unfairly targeted. There's a real predatory business climate going on in that industry, and there is definitely some fear. So I hope that we'll, we'll, you know, reconsider that and make sure we get it right. And I want to thank the folks who came up advocating for marijuana decriminalization. We see that the city of Clarkston, where my friend Ted Terry is mayor, went and moved forward with this, and I look forward to speaking with him soon about how it's impacting their community. I have spoken with folks in the city of Washington DC where they've done it, and they have seen very positive impacts. I also have some concerns from some constituents about parking issues. Downtown is about to be a real hot mess as all these kids start moving into those apartments. And from what I understand, downtown parking is not allowed to tow. They can tick it, but that doesn't solve the problem when you've got somebody who's parked their car in a loading zone or is taking up employee space in an Athens-Clark County lot. So I don't know if, if the attorney can somehow come up with some, I know for special events, they're given special authority to tow, so maybe we can come up with a designated period when that authority is allowed. And there's also the concern about parking on sidewalks during fraternity and sorority rush. We, I forwarded an email from a citizen who had lots and lots of pictures from last year of buses parked on sidewalks, service vehicles parked on sidewalks. And, you know, this forces folks to get into the street on Millage Avenue to go around these vehicles, and that's really dangerous. And supposedly, he's been alerting UGA police, and they will not address it. But I hope that ACCPD can, because it is illegal to block the right-of-way. So I hope we can address these issues very, very soon, because it's going to be a big, big mess in the next couple of weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the Athens-Clark County Police Department and the downtown Athens-
and the Downtown Athens Business Association. They jointly put together a couple of panels for business owners or any interested persons who wanted to interact with Lieutenant Odom around how to manage panhandling as a businessperson. And he did a wonderful job presenting. Jennifer Zworn from DABA also did a good job talking kind of through that issue with them. And here we are, as noted, kind of as students are moving into town, and certainly for those folks who are interacting with new students in town, you know, as they recognize needs that do exist in Athens-Clark County that are legitimate. I'd hope that if you are passionate about those needs, you steer people toward volunteer service with organizations supporting those homeless folks, whether it's the Athens Homeless Center or Action Ministries, that there are many others out there. You know, part of the challenge as we get new young people in town is that those dollars easily flow to people on the street who, as a direct recipient, aren't making as strong a use of it as those same dollars would be made in a service organization.
Mr. Sims?
Just want to say, on the 16th of August, the Athens Transit will be celebrating 40 years of service of transit in Athens-Clark County. And they're going to be having a little celebration down at the Multimodular Center from 12 to 5 o'clock. And, you know, we keep bragging about transit, so let's go down and let them know we appreciate what they're doing.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, I wanted to point out, I think this is our first voting meeting that our new assistant manager, Justin Johnson, has attended. And he hasn't hightailed it out of here, so I think that's a good sign, right? So welcome him aboard. Also want to mention that the YWCO is having a fundraiser called East Side Eats on August the 21st. It's a Sunday from 5:00 PM until 7:00 PM. It's going to be in the Gem on Research Drive. They're going to have a whole bunch of eateries that have samples of food. There'll be a silent auction.